Hello, everyone, and welcome to today's program. It has been a while that we've been doing in-studio interviews, and I'm happy to have L.A. City Council member Mitch O'Farrell here, who represents the 13th District in the L.A. City Council, which is actually the district where Asparres and Horizonte have our offices. It's good to have you here, Councilman O'Farrell. It's been a while that you've been here, too, and we've all been doing our own things during COVID, so it's good to have you back.
It's great to be back, and body or to all of your listeners. And thanks for having me, Ara. It's great to see you again.
Yes, since the pandemic was the reason that we haven't been able to do these in-person interviews. Tell us about where we are with the pandemic now. We're in the third year. Two years have passed. Where were we and where are we going?
I check the infection and hospitalization rate every single day. Hospitalizations are very flat, and they're low in the county of Los Angeles. I'm a city council member, but it's a big county of about 10 million people, and the city of L.A. is about 4 million of the county. The infection rate has increased in recent weeks because of the 2.0, which is the Omicron BA 2.0. But it fluctuates daily. Today, the infection rate was low again. But all experts feel that another wave could be happening, just like it did last summer, in the early summer. So we have to keep an eye on that. But the bottom line is, we are coming out of the pandemic. It's just happening a little more slowly than we would like. The unemployment rate's very low. And I believe that because of what the city council has done and some of the leadership that I exhibited during the early days of that pandemic have helped set us on a course for a stronger economy in Los Angeles as we come out of it, through my rent subsidies that I created in my own district that we rolled out citywide to over $300 million to help renters stay housed and their landlords pay their mortgages, to my small business subsidies specific to the 13th District, to my small theater grant. So I think that some of the protections that city leadership provided, which were the most robust in the United States, have really helped Los Angeles weather the pandemic economically. And I think we're staged for a good, healthy recovery here.
And you and your office were certainly front and center when the pandemic hit. You did take part in the very important panel that the Armenian National Committee of America Hollywood's chapter held regarding some of those services. Are those services still available?
They are still available. So what we did when we acted locally back in 2020, we created this fund from state and federal monies through the CARES Act and other funding. And we created a budget of over $300 million, which helped about 100,000 households in Los Angeles. Now, that is fully prescribed, and that money is out the door. But then the state got into the act and gave an assist. That money is dwindling fast. But I'm hearing that Sacramento might put additional funding to help renters and landlords continuing with a budget surplus. I'm learning that the budget surplus in Sacramento is even larger than initially thought. So there are still protections, but there are other ways now to access state monies. So we'll always look for other ways to help keep people housed during the pandemic. We know that there's still food insecurity, so that's why we've engaged in a lot of food distribution efforts, including out of my office since the beginning of the pandemic, and we'll continue that throughout the rest of '22 as well. So we're always looking at all of the numbers, all of the data, and want to make sure that we do everything we can to cobble together the resources to keep people fed, housed, so that, you know, we can stabilize our lives again in all of our neighborhoods and emerge from this together.
Well, the Armenian community unfortunately was quite distracted during the pandemic when we were all just enveloped in the aggression by Azerbaijan against Artsakh, which became a 44-day war. You certainly did much to respond to that issue. Your leadership on making sure that the Shushi sister city issue is tabled until Shushi is back to the under-Armenian control was very commendable. How are you seeing, are you seeing a change in your Armenian constituents since that tragedy happened?
I'm seeing that the Armenian community is still very, very upset and distraught over the Azeri aggression from the fall, early fall, late summer of 2020, which is why I stood with my colleague Paul Krikorian and others from the state and the federal government, Adam Schiff and others, to demand redress and an end to these war crimes that they were committing on Armenian people in our traditional ancestral Armenian homeland. It's wrong. There's still, people are still inconsolable about that, understandably, especially right now with what we have with the invasion of Ukraine by Russia. So that is still unfinished business. And I'm hopeful that we can flex our muscles a little more as a nation to warn against Turkish and Azeri cooperation and collaboration in bringing down the Armenian people in Artsakh. It's amoral. It's another form of crimes against humanity, and the U.N. needs to address it. And they need to address it right alongside with what's happening in the Ukraine.
And the people there are still reeling from that entire situation, including the pandemic that they weren't spared from. I just returned from Armenia, and I do see, you know, kind of a palatable difference in how people carry themselves, but also during the pandemic. Finally, the President of the United States acknowledged the Armenian genocide. You certainly have been an advocate of U.S. recognition of the Armenian genocide. Where do you think this issue should move next?
It was an incredible moment that our U.S. president declared the Armenian genocide a genocide for the first time ever after decades of pressure through various presidential administrations of either party. So that's a huge step. I think we can build upon that. And I think that we can involve our NATO partners into pressuring Turkey, who is a NATO member, that in order for a peaceful South Asia, European, Asian, I would say, collaboration and cooperation for a peaceful region, that Turkey is going to have to get on board between the Turkish government and the Azerbaijani government. I think we have enough power and strength and resources to pressure those governments into standing down. And I'm hopeful that that will happen through governmental action, through our Congress. So I would still definitely support that and campaign for that and lift up that voice, because it is a wrong. And I'm not sure if we've ever talked about this, Ara, but I'm of Native American heritage myself. I'm a tribal member. I belong to a federally recognized tribe. And my ancestors were forcibly relocated just across the country for decades and decades, where they finally ended up in northeast Oklahoma, where I was born. So in that sense, that's a genocide as well. That was an American genocide. And I think that as a world society, we have to call things what they are. I'm as patriotic as the next American. But we can't ignore the past. We have to acknowledge the truth so we can all move forward for a stronger society. And it's exactly the same in the region of the world where Armenia and Turkey are.
And I just hope that this atmosphere of reckoning with our history here in the United States can kind of propel more action into similar injustices that have happened around the world, including my own nation and my own country. So, you know, it's a good thing that I'm seeing in the United States that the pandemic has also created an environment where we're looking at our own history here in the United States and hopefully correcting some wrongs from the past. And we all have to work together as a community and as citizens of this country. Which brings me to the next point. June 7th is the California primary, and my guest, Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell, is up for reelection.
Yes.
So all of you, if you haven't registered to vote, please do so and take part in the June 7th primary elections. Redistricting, how has CD 13 changed?
The 13th District fared very well, I would say overall. Let me just talk about the election briefly here. So the primary date is June 7th, but voting begins as early as May 9th. So to all the listeners today, you'll receive a ballot in the mail in about a week and a half. And so be sure and save those mail-in ballots in advance. And you can vote by mail safely from your kitchen table. You can check the boxes and send your vote in the mail. And there'll be voting centers that will open up in a few weeks from now. And so the election really starts May 9th and ends on June 7th. Yeah, it's, we're working on so many issues right now. We've got the election, but we also have the work that we're doing in the district. And I always say this to my team, and I think my constituents know this, and that is, we just need to be successful. And successful means providing public service, providing constituent services, being responsive to the needs on the neighborhoods that I represent, which are now larger. And then also being a leader on policy. The neighborhoods that we acquired through redistricting are Windsor Square and Larchmont Village, much more of Silver Lake, much more of Glassell Park, where I live, and more of Hollywood. I believe there was an undercount because the council districts that have the highest immigration population are 1 and 13. Well, we both lost population during the count. And I think that's because there was, the people were afraid to be counted because of their immigration status. And Donald Trump was putting the fear into a lot of immigrant communities, so people just kind of backed out. So we had to gain in population as a result. But I have some incredible new neighborhoods that I know quite well. I lived along those corridors in Hollywood as a very young man. I worked in the Wilshire area as a very young man back in the late '80s, early '90s. I know this city really well. So I'm delighted with our new areas. And we've been very active already in all of these neighborhoods, just like we always have been everywhere else.
And, you know, our readers and viewers are in touch with us. There are tremendous amount of, there's a tremendous amount of interest in the election. But also, there are a lot of top-tier issues that are concerning our readers. That, you know, I think if we're in a situation where, you know, talking about Armenian issues and Armenian genocide and all of that has its place in the conversation. But we also live in the district, and we need to address those issues. So when we come back, we're going to take a short break. I want to talk about the big issue, which is in everyone's mind, which is the homelessness issue. And let's see what you have to say about some of the ways to mitigate the problem. Please stay with us. We'll be right back. Welcome back, everyone. If you are just joining us right now, my guest this evening in the studio is Los Angeles City Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell, who represents the 13th District. Right before the break, we were talking about the June 7th primary election and how critical it is for all of us who are registered to vote to take part in the election. Councilmember O'Farrell is running for reelection. As I said before the break, the top issue on the minds of all constituents is the homeless crisis.
No doubt.
Tell me what you have done since the rise of this situation. And what are your views on moving forward?
So homelessness and public safety are the number one and two issues confronting residents across the city. I go door-to-door as never before, and I hear it, and I know it. I live it as well. And here's how we've been addressing homelessness in the 13th District. Despite the increase in homelessness across the city during the pandemic, when it just really proliferated because there was no enforcement through following CDC guidelines, our hands were tied. And it was a very, very terrible time because the encampments proliferated. And alcohol, drug and alcoholism and addiction and mental health issues are endemic in our encampments, and everyone knows it. So I think you can take a look at some of what we've done in my district since that time. If you take a look at Echo Park Lake. Echo Park Lake had become one of the most dangerous places in the city of Los Angeles. Right around the time vaccines were starting to roll in, my office worked very hard over several months to identify housing and shelter for every single person there. And at that time, it was a much lower number than what ended up at the lake over a year ago now, when we engaged in and built the most successful homeless housing operation in the city's history. So over a two-evening period, we housed a lot of folks. But what preceded that was three months of bringing people under a roof, culminated in late March of last year. We were able to offer every single person a place indoors. We'd worked with all of our partners in making that happen. We were able to close the park, make the repairs that were very necessary. There was a lot of damage. There were exposed electrical wires. There was trash piled six feet high, all sorts of biohazardous waste, firearms, machetes, 30 pounds of discarded hypodermic needles, a very, very dangerous environment. Well, we housed everyone there, and we cleaned it all up. And we reopened the park one year ago in May. And it is safe, clean, and secure for all users. And it's going to stay that way. We now have security 24/7. Last month in Hollywood, we housed 31 people along the Selma Corridor near the YMCA. Those sidewalks and the adjacent park are now safe, clean, and secure, where they will also stay. So what my office has been doing diligently is the hard work. It's a real slog, but it takes daily work, and my office has been doing it. We're seeing a reduction in homelessness in Hollywood, Echo Park, and many other places, even Glassell Park, where I live, where we have brought people under a roof to some of our solutions: tiny home villages, safe sleep sites, safe parking sites, bridge home sites, and various other shelter opportunities, and permanent supportive housing. And I am focused on ensuring that there's security at these locations and that all the services that these folks need are there, but at the same time, making sure that our public right-of-way and our parks are safe, clean, and secure for you and your families, so you don't have to worry about the threats that you're feeling. And that's what we have to do. Now, my main challengers in the race don't want enforcement or regulation of the sidewalks or parks anywhere. They also want to abolish the police and have some other really dangerous ideas, ideology as opposed to public service. I'm a public servant. Over two terms, we've done so much across the 13th. And I know Little Armenia quite well, as you all know. I love this community. I feel very protective of this community. And we're going to bring that template of solving these issues. And we have been already here in East Hollywood and Little Armenia and across the district. So public safety, very important. Unfortunately, there's this pervasive sort of environment and permissiveness that some of the bad guys feel that they can just commit crimes and get away with it. And they feel that way because they are getting away with it. And that's a real problem. We need to have balance back into the conversation. And people who commit crimes need to have consequences for the crimes they commit. And I don't feel that is happening adequately right now. And those crimes, especially the felonies, those are prosecuted by our district attorney. And I feel that our district attorney's office is in disarray, and they're not keeping Los Angeles safe. And so I think that's the environment we're in. And I want voters to understand that I am an experienced legislator. I am a constituent and a resident of the 13th District for 40 years, that I believe in safe neighborhoods, that it's everyone's right to feel safe. But collectively, we have a lot of work to do. And I'm looking forward to working with our next mayor, whomever that may be. Because what I'm hearing when I go door-to-door is that people don't feel safe, and they want more done about homelessness. And I feel very strongly that we're having success now in the 13th District. And I will not rest until people open their doors and see a safer, cleaner sidewalk. We're already taking back all of our parks. Our parks are free of encampments. They weren't before, but they are now in the 13th. And increasingly, we're having success along the sidewalks as well. I'll lastly say this. I helped bring back an ordinance, 4118, which regulates the public right-of-way. I have two colleagues who don't support that already on the city council. We don't need a third person on the city council who also doesn't support enforcement or regulation on the public rights-of-way. And my main challengers all have committed to abolishing that ordinance in the 13th and not having any regulation. Because in their minds, I think they feel an ideological value as opposed to a safe neighborhood's value. My feet are planted firmly on the ground here in the 13th. They always have been. And so those are the principles that I stand for and will always fight for in this district.
I guess this issue, we were talking about it before we came to the studio. But for our viewers to also understand, how is it that there is some kind of a choice in adhering to an ordinance or a regulation? How does that work?
So in each council district, you can do what is called pass resolutions of enforcement, and you create a zone under 4118. That is the ordinance. And that is a law that is compliant with a Boise ruling from the Ninth Circuit from a few years ago. So this law is in compliance with the Ninth Circuit ruling. We can and should be enforcing that, and we are. But some council members choose not to. In Council District 4, and that's Nithya Raman; in Council District 11, which is Mike Bond. And they're choosing not to do any enforcement anywhere, and that's causing real problems. And so the good news on what we're doing in the 13th District is we haven't had to enforce 4118 anywhere because we're getting compliance. We're getting compliance at these encampments because we're providing the shelter and the housing. And so we're getting voluntary compliance at all these sites. But we need the tool. We absolutely have to have the tool because our parks and our sidewalks belong to you. They don't belong to someone who's choosing not to get better, not to accept assistance. And sometimes, these folks have been there for years or decades or just showed up from a different city or a different state. Well, we have to have rules and regulations and laws that protect Angelinos. And you have to strike that balance. Bring people indoors, but enforce their rights-of-way. And that's what we're doing. And some elected officials choose not to. And my main challengers will also choose not to do enforcement anywhere, a very, very misguided approach and policy.
But, I mean, this creates an issue or a problem for the lay constituent who is like doing his or her daily chores or whatnot and suddenly steps into another council district which is not enforcing the ordinance the way, let's say, you are. What is the role of the voter here?
One's constituents need to insist on that their elected official enforced the law. That's what needs to happen. If you live in the 4th or the 11th, call your council member and demand that they enforce the law. It's that simple. And that's what we need. We are a nation of laws. And at the end of the day, everyone in this country must abide by a law. And we should not pick and choose who gets to abide by a law and who doesn't. That's the reason people feel so unsafe now because some people are getting away with doing really bad things. And I think that we're, as a society, we're really fed up with that. And people deserve to feel safe where they live and where they work. And I think that this election will be a bellwether for what direction do we want the city to take? Do we want the city to take a direction where you have an elected official with experience and believes in the rule of law and is bringing more people who are unhoused indoors while enforcing and regulating the public right-of-way? So encampments don't come back? Because that's what I'm doing, and that's what I believe in. Or the other choice, some of my main challengers don't want any of that. They believe that someone who is unhoused and unwell, they might have addiction issues or mental health issues, should have the choice just to wait as long as they want until they choose to come inside. But that puts residents and businesses at a disadvantage, and that's not fair. So we have to strike that balance. And that's what we're leading with. And I think, and I know, it's having success across the district. As I mentioned, Echo Park Lake, Hollywood, Glassell Park, and all points along the L.A. River in my district that's in the 13th looking much better than it was. If you look at other parts of the river where there's no enforcement, that's where the encampments are all proliferating. So it's a choice that an elected official has to make. I choose safety, public safety. I choose regulating the public right-of-way so it stays safe, clean, and secure for everyone.
So how has, for example, you know, development or lack of affordable housing impacted this? I want to call it the homeless crisis. That's my view. And are there ways to increase? Are there plans by your district to increase affordable housing in CD 13?
Yes.
How can we mitigate this issue from not becoming another endemic, pandemic, whatever you want to call it? Because we've just lived through one for two years, and we don't want another one.
Don't want that. So there are many reasons for homelessness. There are folks who are priced out and end up in their car or end up on the street eventually. And there's a greater population who have addiction issues. And that's just the reality. And we don't talk about that often enough. A greater population with addiction issues and/or mental health issues. I believe those folks need to get well. And you don't get those folks well again on a path to wellness and safety unless you bring them indoors. And at the end of the day, if we have the space, let's bring them indoors by all means. And I think that the main reason that there are increasing numbers of homeless individuals are severalfold. But I'll give you two other reasons. More and more people are relocating from other cities or other states and end up in Los Angeles because they know that we've been pretty lax here as it relates to homelessness. And then the other reason, I think, is addiction and mental health issues that's not being addressed. So on that count, I'm working on two paths. One that we've been talking about, standing up, shelter. One that we've been talking about, standing-up shelter, temporary housing, temporary shelter, permanent housing, safe parking, safe sleeping sites to get people in, under a roof and on a path to wellness, and we're doing that more than ever, and that's the system that we have. The other is forcing the county of Los Angeles to do their jobs because they have the Health Department, the city does not. We have the contract, the county is contractually obligated to the city of Los Angeles to provide mental health, addiction and recovery services, and public health to all Angelinos, but where they're not providing any of that is as it relates to the homeless population. So I'm leading the council on analyzing that agreement that's been in place for 58 years and has changed very little. That's a huge part of the problem. The county has a way of just washing their hands of it, even though we're suffering the consequences the most. You, my constituents across the city and then the 13th District, live with deficiencies of that agreement, and the county is not living up to their obligations. So I'm looking at that simultaneously of doing the work that we're doing. None of my opponents have any clue or any idea about what that is, but I and my office, we do the hard work, and we're going to get to the bottom of it. And once we figure this out, I think we'll have a whole new template, and we'll hold those responsible who aren't providing the adequate services, we'll hold them responsible, and that's what we need. City leadership is very, very important. We have to have strong, courageous leaders who are afraid, unafraid, to, you know, risk their political career on solving problems, and I think that's what this election is all about as well. And I think Angelinos are smart, and I think that Angelinos will make the right choice.
And what about Little Armenia? There's been this project about the gateway to Little Armenia. Where is that project at, and when can we see it?
So exciting. This is happy news, this is really just a happy space that I want to make sure that the Armenian community can celebrate, because there is definitely something to celebrate. So we're putting the Armenian Gateway at Hollywood Boulevard, just west of Bronson, and it's on the northbound freeway exit to Hollywood Boulevard, the 101. The community wanted this gateway in that specific spot. Seven years ago, when we had this community conversation, and it was a juried choice, selection, the Atanian Art Center was chosen as the designer, but my office had to figure out how to get this gateway on Caltrans property, a state agency and a huge bureaucracy. So over several years, we figured it out. It's on the rise, it's going to be 25 feet tall. We've imported tufa stone from Armenia. It's made of tufa and basalt, and it has a darbas and a barbas, and darbas and karas elements of design, and it's going to rise 25 feet, and it will be complete this calendar year. We will have a huge celebration and block party to commemorate the completion of the Armenian Gateway. There's going to be, there's nothing like it anywhere in Southern California, not like this, and it's in the heart of Little Armenia. And this follows on the footsteps of other sites that we have elevated. The intersection of Hollywood and Western, we declared, and there's a sign that says Armenian Genocide Square. We did that on the 100th commemoration of the genocide in 2015. So we're building upon the history, the culture, and this gateway is going to be incredibly beautiful, and I couldn't be more proud to have helped bring this here to the 13th.
Yeah, and certainly, it's not just initiating, but the community has a role to play in, you know, it is your city, and you are the constituent, so in addition to voting on June 7th, I think getting engaged in these projects is also beneficial, not only for your office, but for the community as well. Before we close, any final thoughts?
Just that there's a lot at stake in this election. The direction of the city is at stake, the direction of the 13th District is at stake. I have always come from a place that's very centered, very reasonable, but also I understand the sense of urgency that people need here in Los Angeles, and we must have that because we're dealing with a lot of issues. There are the issues that we've talked about today, Ara, but there are also larger issues that are important to everyone, like climate change. I chair the Energy, Environmental Justice, Climate Change, and LA River Committee on the City Council. I'm leading the charge to transition all sources of energy generation from, away from fossil fuels within 12 years. No one else is going to be able to do that, and that's an imperative, that's a moral imperative. We will have completely clean energy by 2035. People of all ages are supportive of that, and that takes real work, working with coalitions to make that happen. There are so many leadership issues right now that are at stake, and I feel that voters are smart. I think Angelinos want a safe, clean city, and they want leaders who are experienced, because that matters especially in this election, and not candidates who are good at talking, who just moved into the district, who don't have any experience here and certainly don't know the district. I know the 13th better than anyone. I love this district, it's my home. I love this city. Just like so many listeners who might be immigrants, I'm a migrant. I moved here from Oklahoma 40 years ago and built my own life. I'm here to help you build yours in the 13th District in the city of LA. So I think that I'd just like to close with that, and please, as Ara said, get involved. It's so important. Get involved with my office. Please give us a call, 213-207-3015, and we are at your service.
Thank you, Councilmember, and good luck to you on June 7th. You heard about all the critical issues that are impacting your everyday life, so please get out the vote on June 7th. It is important, your voice is, your vote is your voice, actually. And thank you for joining us today, I'll see you next time.